Call the December fifth, twenty twenty-two Board of, Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at this time. And our first order business is a swearing in of three members of the board.
Y'all go first.
I will swear.
You shall.
And I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Your House.
I state your name.
I will.
You solemnly, solemnly swear.
Do you have further solemnly swear?
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear truly.
The.
North Carolina.
The state of the state.
And to the constitutional powers. And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
If you say.
For the government thereof. And I will endeavor to support it. Maintain and defend. Constitution of the state.
The Constitution of the state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United.
To the best of my knowledge.
Best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God. I state your name.
I will.
Where that I will well.
Where that I will well.
And truly.
And truly.
Execute the duties.
Duties?
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
According to the best of my skill. And ability. According to law.
According to law.
So help me God. I state your name.
I, Eddie Harris.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Eddie Harris.
You further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
The state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional power.
And authorities.
And authority.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
The best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Eddie Harris.
Where?
Where?
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, looking good. All right, lovely. Let's, let's.
Charge bother me in it. Mark, I. I state your name.
Martin.
You solemnly. That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States. So help me God. I state your name.
Martin.
You further solemnly and sincerely swear.
Further solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful. And bear true allegiance.
True allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
Constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Are or may be established.
For the government thereof. That I will endeavor to support.
And to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Of the United States.
United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God. I state your name.
Martin.
Where that I will well and truly execute.
Well, truly execute.
The duties of the office.
Duty of the office.
Of County Commissioner. According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability. According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
Marion, we'll recognize you first as the first elected official. Appreciate you swearing us in this evening.
Please. Honor to be around all of you. Our public service is hard. And I'm proud to be on.
Well, welcome everybody, but I do generally recognize elected officials. Tim Watson, our district attorney, is here tonight. Appreciate you being here. I know you have a family member being sworn in, but we appreciate you being here. Steve Height, our sheriff, we appreciate you being here tonight, as you should be, but anytime you're here, we're glad you're here. Makes us feel safe with all you guys sitting back there. Chad Hutchings, Chad Hutchings, the new city commissioner in Mount Airy, appreciate you being here. Phil Thacker, a new commissioner in Mount Airy, we appreciate you taking time to be here with us this evening. Did I miss anybody? I think that's it. And again, welcome to everybody else for being here. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chairman Eddie Harris for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with humility, and we come to you asking for your grace and your mercy and your guidance upon this board and our citizens here in Surrey County. We thank you for this day. We thank you for these gentlemen up here who are doing public service. We thank you for our law enforcement. We thank you for our military in this great land of ours. We ask for your continued guidance as we go about doing the people's business here in Surrey County, and we pray that we'll do it in your honor and your glory and pleasing unto thee, dear Lord. We ask for your safe guidance, travel, and mercy, mercy, dear Lord, as we go home tonight and through this Christmas season. And we thank our county staff, and we pray for them, dear Lord, and we ask all of these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance. To the United States. And to the public. One nation.
I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and ayes have it. Looking for approval of November twenty-first meeting minutes?
Salute.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approval of April twelfth budget work session number one, April nineteenth budget work session number two, April twenty-sixth budget work session number three, and June eighth budget work session number four, minutes all twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. For our consent agenda, I'll call on Chris Knopf to read, to go over those bullet points.
First item is the tax department end of month summaries, charges, and reports for the board's approval. Second are requests from emergency management, actually four grant requests that will address EMS preparedness and the emergency operations center. Next item is a request to allow Rogers Realty to be involved in the surplus of the items at Westfield that were mentioned at the last meeting, as well as some various surplus vehicles. Next item is also a request surplus vehicles specifically from animal control to various county departments. Next is a conveyance resolution of a stretcher and mounting bracket to the Mount Airy Rescue Squad. Next is a stream flow rehabilitation assistance program grant project ordinance. This is for some of the state monies we received. Part of House or Senate Bill one oh five, and final fiscal year twenty-three budget amendment number five, and that's the consent agenda. Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. This time, we'll have our open forum. I will give citizens about three minutes to talk about anything that's on their mind, that's within reason. So you have three minutes, and when you come forward, please state your name and your telephone number before you get started.
Good evening. I have someone that I want to introduce to you tonight, not a familiar face. She has been around with the county for a long, long time and has just been promoted into a new role. So Joanna Radford, if you would come up. Our new cooperative extension director. We're very proud of her.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited in this new role and just look forward to serving the citizens of our county. So if there's anything that you guys see that needs to be done or issues that need to be addressed that extension can help with, we'll be there. One of the first roles that I had was also since we had a vacancy in our livestock position, then we hired a livestock agent on board, and I would like to introduce you guys to Bailey Wood. And she is not so, I guess, much of a stranger either because she has been with us since twenty twenty. However, she was in the four H role. So she comes to us from Stevens City, Virginia, where she graduated from Virginia Tech in animal science, poultry science, and dairy science. She was raised on a farm, raising livestock herself, and was heavily involved in four H and FFA. So we're very excited to have her to work with our livestock producers in the county.
Anyone else for open forum? Seeing none, I'll close, I'll close the open forum, and we have elections officers for twenty twenty-three. Over to Chris Knopf, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll get started in just a moment. We will open the floor for the position of chairman first. I'll accept all nominations and ask for the floor to be closed, and then we'll have a vote. Follow likewise with the position of vice chairman. If we have more than one nomination for either position, we will actually vote on those nominations in reverse order. So the last nomination received will be the first one voted on that particular position. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman of the board.
I'll nominate Eddie Harris as chairman.
All right. Are there any other nominations?
I move the nomination to be closed.
All right, nomination to be closed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll actually vote on the nomination. At this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Eddie Harris, chairman of the Board of Commissioners for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open the floor for the position of vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Van Tucker to be vice chairman.
Hearing the nomination?
Move that we close the nominations.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, or excuse me, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this time, we'll vote on the actual nomination of Van Tucker as vice chairman. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to Van Tucker on being elected vice chairman for twenty twenty-three. Take just a quick recess to reorganize up here, and then we'll get the meeting started back.
Thank you for bearing with us. I'm trying to figure this out. It's been four years, so. And I apologize for taking so long. As you can see, we enjoy taking pictures and I enjoy, I'm proud that my little grandchildren are here tonight. Man, I believe this is mine here. Man, I believe this is mine here.
How about reach me, please, sir.
Okay. We are delighted for the folks that took the time to come out tonight and for this occasion for us, and it is very special, this will be my 13th year as a county commissioner and I must say that I have certainly enjoyed working with all the folks in Surrey County, the staff and all the departments, as well as my fellow commissioners in particular. And I'm honored that they have elected me chairman and I will be judicious and fair and and supportive of my fellow board members to the fullest extent, and that's the way we do our business here in Surrey County and we do it professional and we have respect for one another and and we do what it takes to get the job done. At this time, I'm going to take the liberty to entertain comments from my fellow commissioners in regards to perhaps the election or anything they may want to discuss, and I'll start with Commissioner Marion.
Thank you Chairman Harris. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight, it is an honor to serve Surrey County. I'd like to thank Marion Boone for swearing us in tonight, she's a lifelong family friend. Good friend, so I'd like to thank my wife for being here tonight, my daughters Angie and Morgan. My wife, she's the backbone, she's the rock, she's the stone. But just an honor to sit with these gentlemen here and and we've got a lot of good things going in Surrey County and I just want to keep it going and I appreciate everybody coming out for the election midterm. Big turnout. I think my opponent, he ran a good, clean, fair race and no mudslinging and it was had a good time out on the campaign trail, getting to know some people and reacquainting with others. So without any further ado, I appreciate y'all being here and look forward to serving for more years. Thank you.
Mr. Goins?
I'd like to thank, first of all, I thank my wife Shelley for her support. I couldn't do this without her and she gets to hear a lot of the comments that nobody else gets to hear and she gives me advice and I appreciate that, that's what you want in a soulmate and so she does that. I thank my mom for being here tonight, means a lot. My sister Julie and her husband Tony for being here, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate all the people who supported me. That means a great deal, there's a lot of people in here, I'm not gonna name names because I'll forget somebody and I'll have somebody mad at me again. That don't take much, but I do appreciate the folks who've supported me in my second term. It means a lot, I enjoy serving the citizens of this county. And I look forward to working with these gentlemen again for four years and two years and then whatever they decide after that, but thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
I was not on the ballot, I want to first congratulate all you gentlemen in your victories, your wins, the three of you that did run and win again, I'd like to wish you another happy four years of hard work and I would also want to congratulate our new chairman again, new old chairman, Mr. Harris, and look forward to working with you again and I want to thank you gentlemen for having confidence in both Commissioner Harris and me as chairman and vice chair for another year. So that's about it, thank you Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
Again, I'd like to congratulate the three of you for your reelection and your willingness to step forward and serve again. I'd certainly like to thank ex-chairman Bill Goins, he has done one heck of a job this past year in serving. There's a lot of things going on and he's handled it very well, he was he was probably everywhere he needed to be, I guess maybe with one or two exceptions possibly, I don't know, but but he would have been there if he could and I appreciate him and also Vice Chair Eddie Harris also in serving as a Vice Chair. We've had a great year in Surrey County. We still have a virus still around us and such as that, we look around us, we've really been blessed in Surrey County. As far as the tragedies and all the difficult weather and all such as that. We let us stay on our toes and try our very best to be prepared for whatever it does come. We're thankful for, I especially enjoy working with the county staff. I've told a couple of them, if they ever decide to leave, I'm going with them. And I probably mean that. And but all of our heads of the departments, it's just a pleasure to work with you. Congratulations to everybody and I hope we all can have a great Christmas season, thank you.
I'd like to thank Chairman, former Chairman Goins. I have, Bill did a tremendous job and I've come to love and respect Bill Goins. He is a tremendous people person, he has a tremendous skill set dealing with people. His temperament is unbelievable. And he has a real knack for solving problems and he's just a real joy to work with and Bill and I have a lot in common and I have learned from Bill and and we, we're gonna keep on learning from each other and I'm very appreciative to Bill Goins for the outstanding job that he's done for Surrey County. At this time, we'll move on. And I apologize, I couldn't be here last time, I had the COVID and, but that was two weeks ago, I think, and I still, I think it left me with a head cold or something, I'm not sure exactly what it left me with, but it's still with me. But anyway, we'll move on to our swearing in of the Sheriff's Department Office Staff at this time.
You all will line up right here in front of our commissioners. Out that way, I will have wonderful photo ops here. All right, if those who are swearing will place their left hand on a Bible, raise your right hand and if you're affirming, if you'll raise your right hand. So I'm gonna proceed the way we've already done earlier today, so I will say the oath and at the end I'll ask if you swear or affirm what I have said, okay? All right, do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith? That you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government also thereof? And that you will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of your knowledge and ability? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as detention officer? All right, do you acknowledge that the Office of Detention Officer carries with it important responsibilities in serving the citizens of Surrey County? As a member of the Surrey County Sheriff's Office, but does not include the power of arrest nor other powers and authorities reserved for sworn law enforcement officers? All right. That you will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as detention officer according to the best of your abilities, skill and judgment, so help you God. All right, congratulations to you all, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we get started back, I just want to say that those folks that just got sworn in, they probably got one of the toughest jobs ever in Surrey County. But mind you, they're about March or April. They'll be moving into a new facility where their jobs will be a whole lot safer. They won't have to worry about it as much when they go to work, so we're proud of that, thank you.
All right, and speaking of this, still, okay, if y'all want to get where he can, because this is important that y'all be seen. All right, if you all likewise, at the end of each statement, I'll look at you and ask if you affirm or swear to what I have said. Do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Deputy Sheriff of Surrey County, so help you God? All right, do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States? That you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof? And that you will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? All right, do you solemnly and sincerely swear or affirm that you will be alert and vigilant to enforce the criminal laws of this state? That you will not be influenced in any manner on account of personal bias or prejudice? That you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of your office as a law enforcement officer according to the best of your skill, abilities and judgment, so help you God? All right, congratulations gentlemen.
And you're always leaning in in a weird way, you just really want to be in these photos. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I left out one thank you here that I needed to take care of. I want to thank my wife, I was remiss in not thanking her. And my wife Robin is here tonight and she puts up with me in this public service and she's always been real good to tolerate my antics in politics and public service and and of course my daughters and grandsons and my father, thank you Dad for what you've done for me as well. Jonathan Sutton, our Fire Chief Counsel, paid staffing program update.
So good evening commissioners and I appreciate you having us here and just want to let you know that the paid program that y'all implemented is working and what we're here to do is to kind of give you an update of everything that's gone on over the past four months and what to look forward to in the future through this program, so I'm gonna go over this first little packet in your in your booklet there if you would like to follow along. In July, our timeline started and what we were going to do is try to find the best person out there for our departments, we had to do some research, we had to go out, we had to make sure our insurances were right, we had to go in and adjust some policies that our fire departments had already in place to get, to make sure that we were all legal with the state and we were all legal with our insurance policies as well, so from about August 1st through the end of August sometime, the application process started. Each fire department that was chosen, there was five, went through this application process just a little bit different. Each department had their own Board of Directors, so, and their own policy, so their Board of Directors picked the person that was best qualified, not the Chief Counsel. There were some questions I've heard from some of you about that and who picked and just wanted to make that clear. First week in September, second week in September, the interview process has started. We went from board interviews, we had different tests, written tests, some departments done a skills and agility test. But we all come together and we all pick the best person that our fire departments thought was best at the time. So from about September 12th was when this person started, so that gave us about two, two and a half months worth of time to gather this data. And as you can see on that first page and starting the second page, the data kind of speaks for themselves. The stations that got this was Skull Camp, Pilot Knob, Jodlem Down Fire Department, Central Surrey and Banner Town and Robbie is the Chief of Central Surrey and Brian is the Chief of Skull Camp right here with me. They can answer any questions that you have pertaining to their fire departments here in just a second. One thing I want to draw your attention to is in the bold. Each one of these fire departments has a time period that their person works, usually eight to five, some work seven to four, it just depends on what their schedule is. While that paid guy is on staff, he's responding to all calls. You can see the difference in the time periods that the person on staff responds to calls and gets on scene compared to the time that if no one was there. I'll just give you some examples, 72, it's made a four minute and 13 seconds response time difference. 76, a five minute and 22 second response times difference. 66, a five minute and 30 second response time difference. 77, four minute and 32 second and 75, four minutes and seven second response time difference. I want to put this in perspective. If you had a loved one or if you were having a hard time and you needed help, what would that five minutes and 30 seconds be worth to you? What would that four minutes and seven seconds be worth to you whenever you're hanging upside down in a car on 77? I'll be honest with you, it's life and death. It's comfort knowing that your loved ones is going to be taken care of as fast as they can. This program allows that to happen. This program allows one truck at least to get out when the pager is set off. You can ask these gentlemen beside me, 30 seconds, that's about the timeframe from when the hones go off to when that first truck is en route and then they're on scene five minutes or so after that. So a lot of you can see this total calls there, the total calls that they ran in a two and a half month period was 134 calls. The total calls that they ran in a two-and-a-half-month period was one hundred and thirty-four calls. That's a pretty good bit of calls. It's nothing like what the EMS runs. But if you look at it as a whole year, if you multiply that number right there by twelve, you get a huge number of calls that just the paid staff ran. What these people do outside of running calls is just as important as what they do while they're running calls. If you look on that second page, the first bullet, the dark bullet point, you'll see the, just some of the examples that the paid staffers do. A lot of what they do is keeping up with their ISO requirements. Mechanical checks on the trucks. Each piece of equipment on the truck has to be checked per week. I'll just give you an example. Our Engine One has over four hundred pieces of equipment. It has to be checked once a week. So if you do that by hour for trucks, you're, you know, an hour and a half to two hours per truck checking it off. We're doing pre-surveys now, pre-fire surveys. We're doing water point and hydrant maintenance. All of these things takes a pretty good bit of time. If you turn your, if you turn the page, you'll see an example of one of our pre-survey packets that each commercial building in our district has to have per ISO. It takes a lot of time to do this yearly. Each one of these has to be redone yearly or updated yearly. So in my district, we have roughly fifty businesses. That's not that many, but for Westfield, it's a good bit. Think about Banner Town, think about South Surrey, think about Pilot Mountain, think about Franklin. Those businesses, it takes a lot of time for this to happen. And these people are the ones performing that duty whenever they're not on call or going to a call. Training, ISO requires two hundred and thirty-six hours of training for max credit. These people will get max credit. If they're on shift, they do at least an hour's worth of training, and that helps the whole department. Those number, training numbers are huge whenever it comes to lowering your ISO or keeping your ISO where it is. So that last one, entering call reports and training reports into our county software. That is also state mandatory and ISO-related. Just give you an example, we've run three hundred and eighty-nine calls in Westfield this year. Just putting those calls in probably took an average between twenty-five and thirty hours just for those three hundred and eighty-nine calls. So somebody's got to do that work. What I would like to do now, if you've got any questions for these guys, the paid staff are at these two departments and a few more. But they're more than willing to answer any questions that you may have for them.
I don't have a question, but Jonathan, I want you to introduce you as the new chairman of the fire council. And your counterpart is the vice chair.
So in January, we will take over the chief counsel as myself being the president and Brian Low being the vice president of the chief counsel, yes.
I certainly see what you're saying about time. And it looks like to me, they're very busy when they're not on call, when they're not answering.
Right.
And who did that with over?
Nobody.
The chief or somebody.
And I'd add too, to the perspective for those response times, that puts those response times on par with any municipality. I'm a career firefighter myself, and the department I'm in tries to maintain five minutes or less response time with a five-square-mile district. The Skull Camp can now maintain a four-minute response time with a fifty-seven-square-mile district by having body staff in the truck during the day.
So Brian, for example, you have three different locations in your area. Do you move this paid firefighter around, or do you have him stationed at one all of the time?
His primary station is out of the West Pine Street Station, the original, two-eleven West Pine Street. But each week, he will for hours travel to two additional stations to clean, inspect, check those equipment. Like he said, four hundred pieces of equipment on an engine. We have three engines with three stations, two tankers, a support apparatus. So he's checking out eight pieces of apparatus every week for our department.
Then he's going to Anne Ridge, Anne Ridge.
He does. So our paid person responds not only for fires, but also rescue for that end. We help with squads doing that. So he had responded to one first end in our territory, house fire. Two vehicle fires, seventeen, I think, motor vehicle accidents. With some of those, I think, three of those being rescue calls on the interstate. So not only did he get out of the station in under a minute for our territory, but he's getting rescue tools on the road for a neighbor.
How many of our fire departments now take it back or do the rescue part? Not all of them, but we have.
I don't have a good number, but from our end of the county, Fourway, Westfield, Banner Town, then you got Pilot Rescue Squad, and then Mount Air Rescue Squad on that end. What, who isn't on your side?
The certified, I know we are. I think maybe Franklin is. And I think a number of departments are working towards it. We've done it since ninety-four, so we've been doing it for a while due to our location. But we do it in conjunction with the squads, so it's a partnership.
So this full-time firefighter is not only fire, but also he's qualified to be the first responder, rescue person in all capacities. Is that correct?
Correct.
Serves it all.
So some departments don't have that requirement in it. For instance, Pilot Knob, they don't have first responder, they don't have rescue in their fire department. So they don't require those items to be considered as paid staff. For my department, yes, we would, you would have to have rescue, or TR, you would have to have first responder or EMT and firefighter too.
And that's the same for our department.
And it is my understanding, you work very diligently on separating it out, so the whole county will be covered. Is that?
Correct. So there, we have broken it up into three or five quadrants. And one person or one person was hired in each quadrant. And then hopefully in the next couple of years, we can get more people added to those quadrants around. That one person is responding on each house fire in that area. So we mapped it to where at least one paid, or that paid person will come to that structure fire from that one location.
The structure fire that we ran first in during this time period, we had four paid staff. We had our full-time, our incentive guy, and then two neighboring departments full-time. That totaled about eight thousand gallons of water that they brought us in a hurry.
One of the items that I wanted to bring to y'all next time, we plan on coming back in March and try to give you an update every three months on how this program is going. And I would like for y'all to come up with some questions and understand, or let us understand how y'all feel and where this program is leading down the road for y'all in March. I would also like for you to understand that little last thing on the summary. Tracking data for next up today, or next update will also include number of firefighters responding that paid staff are responding to. There's a lot of times that these paid staffers are the only ones responding to these calls because there is no volunteers responding with them. So I'm taking just a guess right here, out of those hundred and thirty-four calls, I would guarantee you that there are forty or more of those calls that that is the only person on those calls.
Is that a mentality of, if you've got the paid person there, that I'm a volunteer, I know he's going to the scene?
It's not in our district. It's the fact that during the day, these people are working and there is no one in our district to cover. We are lucky that we do have two people that work from home eighty percent of the time, but if they're not there during the day, they're just not in the district. And we've got, you know, we've got protocols if that happens to page in next departments and so forth. But if you start paging in next departments two minutes after it's paged, your time is just hurting right now.
Emergency equipment's rolling.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we've hit a home run right here. Want to keep gaining on it.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank y'all for all your hard work. It's, you know, and Mr. Johnson says lots, volunteers are hard to come by these days. We appreciate our volunteers.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate our hired people now that's in these departments. And it's, I mean, on paper, and I'm sure victims that are seeing this and need this are seeing a big difference too.
Right.
Four minutes, that determines whether you get somebody out of a house that's burning or save a house.
Yeah.
And car wrecked too, and just thank you for what you do.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Jonathan, where do you guys see this going? I don't have, I mean, my question, I guess, is over nineteen departments, where do you see this in two years, five years, six years? With volunteerism being as low as it is and with the need to have paid firemen in volunteer fire departments? What's, where do you see it going?
So in my eyes, volunteerism is constantly going down. You can look at any pay, or any volunteer department in the county, and that's the same thing. We have talked about it in chief's meetings. We've talked about it in our committee meetings for this. We would like to see over the next three, four, or five years, every department having a paid person at it. So that, a couple of different reasons there. One, to respond quicker and to make sure people are actually responding. Two, to make sure everybody is at least working towards or has their ISO lowered to save those taxpayers money. If we're, if they have that person on site and they're not doing that right now, there's something going on. But if they don't have that person in their building right now, that's one place that they are struggling because they don't have the personnel to actually lower their ISO rating. So.
Now has a paid person.
There is five departments that we're having right now through the county. There are two departments that has already come before the commissioners and asked for money to do that in years before. And they have several people, like Franklin has two people full-time at their station right now. And South Surrey has one person full-time at their station. Yeah, Banner Town is also looking at hiring a second. If you look at their call numbers over the last two months, they ran fifty-one calls just in between those paid staff hours. That's huge. And then they have two stations, they have, you know, eight trucks as well, so.
One point of clarification, those two departments you mentioned, they didn't actually come to us requesting monies to do that. They pretty much, of their own accord, said, you know, we're going to hire someone. It was outside of the purview of us as county commissioners because they weren't on county benefits.
Correct. They asked for an increase in tax funds to do that.
Yes. Yes and no. You know, how they dispense their tax monies that they get from the county is up to them. They can make requests for whatever it is they may deem necessary. But, you know, at the end of the day, they can spend their monies the way they see fit.
Correct.
Yeah.
Jonathan, I have, any of you can answer. I remember Commissioner Harris saying, you know, years ago, we grew up, we want to be a fireman. I was hooked was, I want to be a fireman. Give me a hat, whatever. But tell me what it takes now for a volunteer person to be a fireman. I mean, what does a state require? Time, money, whatever? If you can take a minute on that.
So the state only requires thirty-six hours of training. But I'm telling you right now, thirty-six hours of training will not get you to be a firefighter in, well, it won't get you to be a firefighter in Westfield. To get be a firefighter in Westfield, you've got to know a little bit more than what thirty-six hours of training will give you. For instance, if you're going into a house fire, you've got to be a certified interior attack person. And that's a pretty good bit of hours. If you're going to be a rescue person going in and cutting somebody out of a car, that's over a hundred hours of training just for technical rescue. If you're going to do, be a first responder, if you're taking the MR class, that's a little over a hundred and twenty hours, I think, of just to be a first responder. If you want to be an EMT, that's about three hundred and some hours just to be an EMT. I get those, that hundred and some, it's pretty close there. So it's a lot of time. If you wanted to drive a vehicle, each vehicle in our station, you've got to have a certain number of hours to drive it. For instance, you've got to have eight hours driving the truck. You have to have five hours of pump time drive or pump time pumping off that truck. And then you have to have so much training on that truck to actually be able to drive it. We don't want somebody getting to a call and them not knowing what to do once they get there. So it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort to be a firefighter and a lot of money. You're right.
The state just released a new program this year, because you have your certification. But they also released a volunteer firefighter training, recommended training program. And they expect it to be a minimum of two hundred and sixteen hours just to be able to put the gear on and respond to a call at a bare minimum. That's what the state's recommending now as an entry level.
And that's ridiculous. That's why there's no volunteers out there.
And that does play into.
Yeah.
The state of North Carolina, if they keep on, they'll run all the volunteers off. And, but that's a lot of hours and a lot of time in a busy world that we live in today to try to get people to make that commitment.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen.
Well, I appreciate your time, and we'll look forward to seeing you in March. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Mark Willis. Substance Abuse Recovery Department.
Evening, gentlemen. Congratulations, Chairman Harris. John Wayne once said in one of his movies, never apologize, it's a sign of weakness. I'm going to go against the Duke's counsel tonight and apologize to you for not being up here more frequently. But it not, it has not been due to a lack of action. You all have been pretty busy, and I didn't want to clog up the calendar. What I'm going to present to you tonight is something I want to standardize for all further briefings. If, when I do this more frequently, if you like the format here, we'll continue it in the future with just updating the numbers that we provide you tonight. One of the most difficult things we do is trying to measure impact. We can send you a lot of numbers for process, and I'll give you some of those numbers tonight. But for you to be able to say the expenditure for funds, manpower, equipment, and the some eleven thousand square feet we now occupy in the basement is actually accomplishing something is a difficult task to do. You'd say the easy thing would be to measure the population of people who have substance use problems in this county and just watch it shrink. But we know that's almost impossible because that kind of census just cannot be accomplished. But what we can do is measure the impact of various events that occur continually throughout the county to see if that population we know has a significant impact on those events. If we're decrease, if there's a decrease in those events over time, we have to make an assumption that that population If we're decrease, if there's a decrease in those events over time, we have to make an assumption that that population that's involved in those, those events is also decreasing. So we've divided what we're going to measure and we're going to post this as well online on our website. It will help us significantly to justify as the Attorney General is requiring measuring impact when it comes to the point where we start expending opioid litigation settlement funding. We have five areas that we're gonna continually measure whenever we can collect some of the statistics. Some of them are semi-annually, some of them are, are monthly and we've divided them up in five different areas. We're going to measure the personal health of our population, our family health, community health, business health and the area of criminal justice. We've got in those five categories, twelve indicators we're going to continue to measure. Call these the state of the county in those five different areas. The first is personal health and when you look at this, this gauge, what we're doing is measuring against other counties, the ninety-nine other counties in this state. We measure acute hepatitis C infections because those are primarily a, an indicator of the level of our population that uses intravenous drugs via needles. If we can decrease hepatitis C populations, we're decreasing the population of people who are using those needles. And Surrey County in comparison to ninety-nine other counties is above seventy-five percent comparison. In other words, we're in the top one quarter of counties for acute hepatitis C infections. Also can measure suicides, although you can see it's delayed over time. Suicides are important. Studies have shown them, one of the most significant was performed by Mr. Deaton and Ms. Case and published in a book called Deaths of Despair, where suicides are a significant part of deaths of despair as, as well as drug overdoses. So we, we're going to measure suicides and which are also part of accidental drug overdoses. In the area of family health, we can get these fairly, we can get the number of foster kids that are in are, are the children that are in foster care. We work closely with the DSS and Child Protective Services. We sit at the top or at least the bottom of the fourth quartile in, in the state for the number of children that require foster care due to being taken away from their parents due to drug use. Neonatal abstinence syndrome is difficult to, to measure. That's, that's babies who were born addicted because their mothers used, used drugs during, during pregnancies. You can see that we are very high in the state for NAS. One of the reasons it's difficult to measure is we have no NIC units in this county. But doctors are very acutely aware of mothers who have substance use problems. So anytime there's any indication there's a birth, typically they call EMS, they transport to using Baptist Wake Forest where the birth takes place there, sometimes the tracking that mother and what county she came from is difficult. We're working with sources at DHHS as well as the hospitals to try to track that back. But from what we know, we are, we went very high in the area of NAS verse in this county. We work very closely with EMS and their numbers for, for overdoses, although Director Southern and I agree that those numbers from last year at five thirty-three and forty-four are actually kind of red herrings, to be truthful. If you look at the amount of Narcan used by first responders, both law enforcement as well as EMS and then compare it year over year, last year to this year to the number of reported Narcan administrations by private citizens. The number of EMS and first responders administrations of Narcan has decreased and the number of administrations by private citizens has increased and that's all we can track very closely. Law enforcement and EMS reports, it's almost anecdotal as to what citizens report. Although EMS tries to get those reports from the first responders, but we know at least those are going up. So how many administrations?
I mean, just if we took a guess, what, what, two thousand?
Administrations?
That number versus what really happens. Will we be close to two thousand, fifteen hundred?
We know now, remember, here's the only thing I will venture to guess at. We know very well the number of overdoses that EMS responds to. We know anecdotally from the EDs that you could add a probably one additional overdose that EMS does not transport. In other words, to drop off or a walk-in at both of our EDs, that's one a day. So could you add five thirty-three plus another six hundred and claim that, yeah, we're, we're close to two thousand? And who knows how many overdoses occur where EMS is not called and no one goes to the ED? Don't know.
That's like the iceberg.
Yes, sir. That, that's why I, I, and I think Director Southern would agree with me that if we just tracked overdoses or overdose deaths, not that those go unknown. Those are very well documented, but even those are significant delays between the report that comes back from the forensic pathologist in, in Winston-Salem. And even those reports, the pathologist is refusing to sign whether the cause of death was a drug because there could have been a number of extenuating circumstances, including poly-drug use, which is about forty percent of our overdoses, close to that. And so many unhealthy people might have a, a death that the pathologist doesn't even want to guess. Whether it was the drug or whether it was an enlarged heart or whether it was endocarditis that caused the overdose. What we are, when it comes to community health, expanding on is adverse childhood experiences. The state, there, there's a very long list. Some significant, used to be ten, it's getting longer, number of adverse childhood experiences that actually add to the potential that a child may be involved in drugs. And unfortunately, Surrey County, when you look at those, those things that you can actually track, Surrey County is very high on that list. And in fact, we're on about the ninth month of a study that was offered to us in conducting research as to why we have so many problems with ACEs in this county. And we're going to get that data from the state once they tabulate it. We're going to look at business. You can, and every, everyone tracks business that's easy to follow. The unemployment rate is also sort of a red herring. I think what's more interesting is the, the workforce participation rate. We're going to watch that closely. Lastly, in criminal justice, obviously everyone's interested in the incarceration rate and where we sit in comparison to other counties in the state is about midway. We're about in the fiftieth percentile for the number of people that are incarcerated per, per capita. I'm working with the sheriff's office to, to get data on crimes against property and involuntary commitments. I don't think the sheriff's office or any law enforcement agency or, or, or any business will argue that probably ninety percent of crimes against property, that's typically shoplifting. It isn't significantly impacted by people who are fueling their drug use with with stealing. Those are the things we want to post. Those are the things we'll track and compare over time. What we hope, when we look at all the bad things, that we hope that all the things that we are doing will start to reverse. The more things we do good, the less things that, that are impacting the county that are, that are bad. What we're tracking presently on our website is our prevention program and our activities there. We've just kicked off with Red Ribbon Week. Six days worth of intensive education and prevention in the schools. Ms. Reeves did an incredible job of expanding what she did last year and we hit over nine thousand students with the message. And twenty-three schools since her time and we tabulated this, not including this revenue, Red Ribbon Week, since her time is hiring. Over a year ago, she's provided two hundred and sixty presentations to, and disseminated over four hundred and eighty chemical disposal kits to, to citizens and we're doing even more. We now have a, which is now posted online, a dedicated prevention plan for the entire year. And we'll kick off pretty soon a, an education communications campaign throughout the county. So we now are fully staffed internally for an intervention team. We have three peer support specialists that do nothing but take referrals and connect with people who need connection to so, social supports. Even that number, we updated from November numbers and since the initiation of the intervention team, we received over seven hundred and forty-eight referrals to support services and a hundred and seventy-five county residents have since been connected to treatment services either in the county or, or outside the county and sometimes outside the state. We've been operating our community transportation program or Ride the Road to Recovery since June of, of twenty twenty-one. And when you see September's numbers there, we looked at October's and we've now received over seventeen hundred requests for transportation, driven over sixty thousand miles throughout the county and provided a hundred and sixty-eight individual residents to connection to, to treatment services inside the, the county. A a pilot program we started in August is a re-entry program. So now I have a business advisor as well as a peer support specialist who's helping connect with people in detention. And the detention center is presently incarcerated as well as with probation. And I can't even keep up with the numbers fast enough to post them on our PowerPoint. Ms. Venable Schiff has now recruited thirty-one companies in the county that are interested in hiring people that are either on probation or due to be released from the detention center. As of this morning, she's connected thirty clients to, to employment. I have to come in the sheriff's office. He's, the sheriff has allowed us to improvise and adapt and overcome due to the overcrowding in the detention center. We, we worked with Paytel, which has the Paytel pad that's inside. And we came up with a skills assessment that was an app uploaded to that pad. And we tested it in August and in less than thirty days, a hundred and ninety-one detainees complete that skills assessment and Paytel referred that to us. Both Ms. Schiff and the newly hired peer support specialist, Ms. Callaway are working to communicate with people who are in detention and get them lined up with interviews once they're released at the, at the end of their, their time on the detention center. What we're working on presently is trying to expand our recovery oriented system of care through working with Huchatham, Moral Hospital and the Foundation in establishing a recovery community center. I want to get more recovery coaches, which are like peer support specialists, the like mentors. That's a training program and I'm trying to, to, to build a cadre of that. And you're well aware of the New Hope, New Beginnings Transitional House in Manory, which would be the first transitional house in, in Surrey that we had hoped to have that done now, but due to a number of factors, it's still it's still in the construction stage and will probably take about eight to ten months to complete. That's, that's all I got, gentlemen. I'm open for questions. Is this, one of my questions is, do you like this format? We'll continue to update it quarterly. We certainly post, we'll update it online monthly. But if this format suits you, we'll continue to, to provide you this on a quarterly basis. So you get used to seeing what we're, what we're tracking and be able to compare the numbers.
Your, of course, data is, you know, interesting topic. You make the reference that use the term across the state, across the state. Do you think that tracking your data with counties that we call our peer counties, like Rockingham, I think is one and Wilkes. And, you know, counties that demographically and socio-economically are very similar to Surrey County would serve data equally as well or better, or you think it's not worth?
I agree with that. I think we can get more tailored in, in our approach to do just a blanket. You know, some, some counties are getting significantly more opioid settlement funds than, than we are. Hard to compare us to Durham or, or Raleigh, so we can get more specific in that. For, for instance, you know, when I started, was that around June of twenty eighteen? We were ignominiously listed as number one in the state for opioid overdoses per capita. At last check with the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, we're number forty-one. And that compares us. Now, certainly I'd like to be one hundred, but comparing us to other counties, ninety-nine other counties does show that at least we're, we've had problems via or because of COVID. But at least our problems weren't as bad as other counties, whether they were larger or smaller.
Do you attribute that to our situation here with opioid drug abuse getting better or other counties getting worse?
I'm not prepared to, to answer that. That, that's a statistical question we're still trying to, to figure out. I, I'd like to tell you that I think the problem would be worse if we hadn't made this, this effort, but I can't prove that.
Understood.
And I wasn't trying to put you on the spot asking, you know, the guess on the number. But I do think the public needs to understand that number presented is not the real number. That's not, that's not the real number by any means because of the Narcan. And my hat's off to you and your team. We have a problem. We're addressing that problem. I do think it's going to take and, and I've heard you say it and I've said it and, and I know other people have said it. That we need to educate our public, our citizens about drugs and, you know, what to, what to look for and, and all those things. I've, I've become educated over the years, being in the school business. I got some real educations on, on drug use and things that went on that I had no idea. And I don't think the public really understands that sometimes. And I feel like, you know, we, we can do a better job maybe educating our, our citizens as well. So I think this information is good. It's really good. I think our, you know, we're not going to arrest. That's one thing. We can't arrest a way out of this problem. And my hat's off to you and your team for what you do each and every day. Because I do, I do believe you're making a difference.
I think our objective is to try to equal the effort that, that's put into supply reduction on the part of law enforcement as well as the, the, the court system. I think that's something that's been missing in a lot of, of, a lot of jurisdictions and certainly here. So if we put effort into demand reduction and keep up with the supply reduction on the part of law enforcement and match that, I think we'll have a program to be proud of.
Yeah, and I wasn't mocking or trying to certainly put you on the spot with that question either, Director Willis. I, I'm, I'm really interested. I, I'm, I'm really interested in whether we're turning the curve a little bit, none, some, and all in the last four years. You know, we put a lot of money, effort, kind of paved the way with a lot of rural counties in North Carolina on, on trying to do something. And I appreciate all that you have done and that your department is trying to do. And and I am somewhat curious as when we were like in the top one, have we gotten a little better? Or in fact, has this opioid crisis just begun to catch up with other counties? Then maybe that wasn't quite as bad when, when we took on this challenge four years ago. I, I certainly admire everything you folks do, and I think you're swinging the bat at it and you're, you're trying. And we're, we're trying to make an effort to make a difference. And I guess it yet remains to be seen how those, how that will affect our final results. But I admire you and applaud you and we appreciate all you do.
I think you have a plan, like you have a plan to be proud of. We get, it is not unusual. We'll get calls from other counties asking what we're doing, not only inside the state, but outside the state. So I, I've, I've wanted to help those other counties, but I fear that I, I don't exist to help Maricopa County. But I'm certainly wouldn't willing to help in order to exchange ideas with what other counties are doing in other states.
Sure.
I am tickled. Four year, four and a half years ago, we didn't have you. We didn't have anything. And so what I heard, I think around a hundred and seventy-five individuals has says, I need some help. And you've helped them. And that's a big difference, whether they follow through or what. You have it set in place. You have transportation set in place. You have everything you need set in place. I knew detention centers going off for more room.
Yes, sir.
With some multipurpose rooms there to help with whatever, with those incarcerated. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I, I attended, Chris, we, a few weeks ago, I attended a legislature's goal in Raleigh. And they, one of the, one of the legislators goes, of course, about opioids and whatever. There was a law enforcement officer who was also, I assume, a county commissioner somewhat. And if it's okay, Chief Deputy Low, come up to the podium a second. I've got a question for you. Or for all of you, and maybe Eric also with EMS. I just, this, this, I just want to see if it's right here, right here, the circumstance. Yeah, come on, join, join in with him. I know I get a good answer from it, all of you. But he was very adamant about the big problem that we have, and it's the law, the laws that we have. You get a, you get a call, nine one one call about an overdose. And you administer Narcan to them. They perk up. Now, according to the law that I understand, they can decline. They said, leave me alone. I'm going home. Is that correct? That's the way it is right now. Well, that's why I just wanted to show where, it's, it's right here in Surrey County. In other words, Narcan, that that's instantly, heptama, they're okay now. And they go their way or choose to go the way they have that right. We don't, and that's all you can do. Is that, and that's correct?
Oh, that comes under National, North Carolina statute one twenty-two C.
Okay, well, I just
Can't, you, there is a, there's a caveat for substance use or involuntary commitment, but it's very difficult to involuntarily commit someone for substance use.
Okay. Well, is that, is that what it needs to be? I mean, is there, is there?
You can pass the law, but you need the facilities to be able to help that.
Well, I think that's what our legislative goal turned out to be. The biggest majority of the commissioners, they want, they want something different. Is that, is that, that's a good idea? I mean, to have something better?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Even on, even if you can get the commitment, problem is finding the bed.
Well, but we're not, I should, I should have said, I, I'm sure you would agree that this is a return same individual quite a bit.
Many, many, many.
Okay, all right, that's what I, I should have said that too.
Expanding on that just a little bit, I mean, I'm sure you track those folks that receive Narcan EMS calls. I mean, I, I just, I don't know. I'm just curious. Do, are they repeat offenders two times, three times, five times, seven times?
Yes.
Wow.
I can give you an example. A few days ago, probably within, we had a call that had come out. It was an overdose. And it was paged out of the cardiac arrest. Body was sitting out there too, was just fifteen minutes later, the caller called back and said, need EMS and give Narcan, everything's fine. So EMS was canceled. So Sheriff's Department sent on to do a welfare check, of course. Got out there, sure enough, this person didn't revive with three doses of Narcan. And Sheriff's Department checked on him. Everything was fine. We can do that. That's the point of it a lot.
That's what I'm saying. It just, the book stops and it ain't going nowhere.
Well, that's something actually that that Director Southern and myself using the intervention team is paramedics are working on. We've identified that problem, identified specifically a list, looking at finding our efforts. His paramedics, our peer support, or specifically our people who are frequently have problems. Rather than just waiting.
Right. I, I just wanted to share that, Mr. Chairman, I just feel like it was important that your, 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 your hands are tied. You know, you, you answer, look, look what it, yeah, I don't need to get into what it costs us. But look at all the time you spend. And all it takes is thank y'all, say, I don't even get to thank you. I refuse. I'm going home. When y'all give me a ride, whatever. Okay.
Do people that use drugs, I mean, do they keep a lot of Narcan on hand?
It's not uncommon to go into a house and you'll see three, four vials of Narcan or Eland or three.
I, I even see now that they have Narcan vending machines in certain places in the United States. Do we have any Narcan vending machines here in Surrey County?
No, sir. DHHS offered free, I think there's five throughout the state.
Just Narcan available to people if they just go in a drugstore and ask for it? Or do they have to go through the EMS? Or how do these peoples come by their, by their supply of Narcan?
DHHS assigned a standing order that
President Yon Will, everybody, the public might need to hear you too. So y'all, y'all can speak to the microphone.
There's a stand, what's called a standing order through DHHS. Since typically Narcan is a prescription item, but the standing order allows pharmacies to sell Narcan to an average citizen without a prescription.
Mark, how do you, I'm, I'm assuming obviously data is a big part of your group and tracking it and and using your parameters that you've laid out to to track that sort of thing. How do you define recidivism? I guess people that you're helping, are, are, are you even track this? Or are you, are you going to in the future? People that may be in your program, making progress, and all of a sudden they, they fall off the wagon, for lack of a better term?
Yes, we're, we're doing that internally, difficult to do when you start getting into the hundreds of people that you've dealt with over a year. But yes, we're internally, we're going to start that and actually cross-reference it with, with EMS's data.
It's, we always talk about other counties and do are there any counties in North Carolina that have any long-term data out ten years or five years in, in these efforts like we're doing?
Not that I found. I mean, in those twelve categories over five, of those five or twelve indicators over five categories, no one's doing that. I think with the advent of the requirement to start tracking those, that data in order to, to spend opioid litigation settlement funds and to do what we're already doing, which is create a website with a dashboard. You'll see more of that as counties get more organized in their effort.
How are you working with partners now and Jeff Aides is, is, what is the relationship there now?
Extremely close. We, we probably talk three or four times a month about various programs. Plus, through monies that came from the General Assembly, through partners have been granted to us. So we regularly talk to them about those expenditures.
Okay, and, and I'm assuming you work with the Surrey Health and Nutrition Center too in various capacities?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I think we've got a very close union between the sheriff's office, Health and Nutrition Center and and EMS. I think all cylinders are firing on, on that cooperative effort.
And I'm assuming that obviously we've got a jail that's going to be ready in the spring. And, and I'm assuming you've been working with the property committee and folks to, as far as your space in the new jail down there and and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that, that plan is being laid right now.
Okay, all right. Maybe when you come back next time, you can update us.
Yes, sir.
On that. All right, very good. Gentlemen, y'all have anything else?
One other question on recidivism. Is anybody have ventured to guess on a national recurring rate? I mean, whatever it is, that does not dissuade me from trying. We as a county and we as a people, we as citizens, we, you know, we want to try to help this problem, help these people. But it's, it's an uphill climb. I, I, I don't know. I've just never heard. Do you, does anybody even guess at a recidivism rate for these folks recurring back into their previous lifestyle and drug use?
Well, I can tell you what I, what I see in studies. That if you don't make an effort to assist in three areas, that would be assistance with transitional housing, assistance with transportation and assistance with employment, that nine out of ten people, even though they successfully complete a evidence-based treatment program, will return to substance use because they'll return to where they came from, because it's, it's all they have. Which is why we have, we're working with the sheriff's office on a reentry program. It's why we're, we're hoping that this transitional house will start us with, with housing. And it's why we have a transportation program, because in the cycle of addiction, all those things are destroyed. And we need to, to help a population of people who have coming out of addiction with rebuilding their lives. And we're not, I tell my people all the time, we're not saving lives. We're reducing the impediments for people who are trying to, to either get into treatment or stay in recovery. These gentlemen are saving lives. We're just trying to build infrastructure to help people reengage into community.
Well, one, one way that I view this, it's real easy to understand for me, is all the collateral damage that drugs do as far as foster care, the school system, the courts, the sheriff's department, the jail. I think I asked you or the sheriff here in our last meeting. The jail is, you know, there's over two hundred folks there now. How many people in that jail do you attribute in some form to drug abuse? And I think the sheriff said eighty-five percent. The people in the jail now are there probably due to drug abuse and the collateral damage for children and for mothers, the domestic violence, the courts, the schools. It's just, it goes on and on and on and on. It is just horrific. And that's one reason why I'm stay furious about our southern border. There's enough fentanyl coming across the border right now to kill every man, woman and child in the world. And, and, you know, it, it's just ridiculous. And I don't know. I hope someone starts to take that a little bit more serious. But gentlemen, y'all have anything else?
I just need to add, now, you're not the only ones that administer as far as on a county level Narcan. Is that, I mean, you said it's private people and everything, but I think, don't our first responders with the fire department, they have that right?
They do.
Okay, is anybody else as far as on the, that represents Surrey County, I guess you could say?
Well, there's a number of nonprofits like Insight that actually is trained to administer as well as has a grant to distribute Narcan. So, yeah, there's, there's any number of volunteer and nonprofit to, to include. We had the hundred-some members of our All-Stars Prevention Group that work with prevention to, trained on the administration of, of Narcan. And in addition, part of our reentry program and recovery-friendly workplace is we're offering businesses Narcan if they want it, as well as training on how to administer it.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Okay, general county business, I think we have an add-on, our finance director, Ms. Laura Neely. Laura?
Good evening. Tonight, we have something a little unique because I have a late budget amendment. And it is different because you have two different options for this budget amendment. You should have this in front of you. That was an add-on. And it explains what the budget amendment is. And there are actually two different parts to this budget amendment. The first one, I'll just go ahead and tell you, it's on both options. It is an amendment for the Yes Surrey Grant for seventy-five thousand dollars. So that would just increase the budget to add that grant, and that's passed through item for us. And then the second is something different, and this is what you have, the two options to choose from. And this is an amendment for options for a contract with E plus that we want to buy out. So in two thousand and fifteen, the MIS department in the county entered into a contract with E plus for what I understand is, I think, our server and network equipment. And we thought it was a dollar buyout lease, but unfortunately, it was a fair market value lease. So when the term expired, which apparently was approximately a year ago, unless we terminated with a written notice, it kept renewing at the last rent price. So we got an invoice for about seventy-one thousand dollars not long ago and said, you know, what is this for? So after Martha got in touch with E plus and we discussed that, that was the rent owed after the lease term ended to continue the lease because it was fair market value lease. So we said, well, we thought this was a dollar buyout lease, and we would like to sit down and talk with you guys and revisit this. And they came down to a buyout cost of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. And Mr. Waltz is aware of this. He has been looped into this. So it is the recommendation that we pay the thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to buy out the lease so that Martha can keep this equipment that is essential for the county network to run on. And the options come into play because you can either amend the budget and use unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to cover the additional cost in the capital lease line item in the MIS department. Or there are invest in Surrey funds that can be used to pay this thirty-five thousand dollars. And after talking with Mr. Knopf, he suggested that you guys decide upon which avenue you want to go on for this budget amendment.
E plus is a public safety vendor.
So it would fall under the public safety invest in Surrey funds.
I, I would, well, yes, I'm looking for discussion. I'll take discussion before, if you want to discuss it to anybody.
Make a motion or discuss.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do the buyout of thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to E plus. And since it falls under the legal options of paying for it from the invest in Surrey funds, I'll attach to that motion. We use that to, to pay it with, rather than take it out of the general fund.
Okay, all right, I have a motion and I have a Commissioner Tucker and I have a second from Commissioner Marion. Any more, any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? The ayes have it? Okay. Okay. Do you need action on the, anything else?
Um, let's see, the actual budget amendment, was that, did that cover the budget amendment?
Ordinance? Do you need the ordinance?
Grant project ordinance for the.
The grant project ordinance. And it's the last attachment, and that is for the Yes Surrey $75,000 budget.
It's a pass-through. That's a separate agency, but when the state allocated funds at their request and the budget was passed in a short session, the, um, county is going to be responsible for passing through those funds and monitoring those.
All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I'll make that motion that we approve the grant project ordinance for Yes Surrey Grant Program. As a pass-through, pass-through program that we administer.
All right, I have motion Commissioner Goins to approve the, uh, grant project ordinance for the Yes Surrey Grant Program. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Chairman?
Second Commissioner Johnson, any more discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. Or unless there's any general county business, anything else you folks may have? Anything else?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. It's only meeting in December, so. Everyone stays healthy and happy over the Christmas all day.
Chairman, I'd like to report, uh, a week or two ago, probably two weeks ago, we had a Farm City Dinner. And that, and I wish Johanna would have stayed here. Uh, Sandy was, uh, with us that evening. Uh, Surrey County agriculture is a, is a big, big investment here. I think we ranked 15th out of 100 counties as revenue brought in in agriculture. And in the top five in two or three, breaking. Uh, and I just thought, how wonderful, you know, we're still a very rural area. Uh, and we, we got a lot of farmers. And it didn't even mention viticulture, didn't mention our wineries at all. So I, 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 at that time, but I just, and we had a great meal and a great, uh, great meeting. We had Assistant Secretary of Agriculture with us. And he spoke very highly. Uh, he's a farmer himself out of Moore County. And it's good to hear from somebody that knows what it's all about farming. But, uh, I was pleased to hear that it was 15th, uh, in the, in the state as far as our, all of our agriculture, all the revenue brought in. So, uh, I just want to share that. And I also, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Commissioner Tucker, you have anything?
Uh, good to know that. Appreciate everybody coming. Appreciate everybody that works for the county, all you department heads, all you law enforcement folks, emergency services folks tonight, Fire Marshal's Office, our guests from other boards that, uh, so faithfully are willing to serve our constituents. And, uh, all you other folks, volunteers, community organizers, and all these sorts of things. Appreciate you all and thank you for coming. And, uh, I do look forward to serving with you gentlemen, uh, for another year. Thank you.
Like to, um, say that, um, I look forward to working with our new school board members. We have a lot of new school board members in Surrey County that were sworn in today. And, uh, wish them the very best and, uh, look forward to working with, uh, all the new school board members in Surrey County. Um, also, uh, thank you, Ms. Heather Moore for the, uh, envelope. And I will certainly look that over on the scenic byway. That's about all I have. Uh, gentlemen, looking for a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Motion Commissioner Tucker to go into closed session. Second Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are in closed.
All right, we are back in open session and we have Dr. Reeves and Board Chairman Suri County Schools Dale Bajett. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here tonight with my Board Chair, Mr. Bajett. This afternoon at 1:00 we met with Sheriff Hyatt to talk about our safety grant. We received an additional safety grant from the Department of Public Instruction and you remember it's been several years ago. I know Van and Eddie, you were on the board when we put middle school SROs into our schools and so we received a grant then. That grant has been continued and we have included two additional elementary SROs in the grant. So it's again, it's a matching grant. So there's basically a four to one match, I think is the way it's characterized. So we're here tonight just requesting that you continue those grant funds. The sheriff obviously got great backup back here, but they were all in the meeting this afternoon to continue those funds for matching this state grant. The grant was, it's for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Beyond those two fiscal years, I don't have an answer for where this goes, but we've not had that answer for the last three, I believe, three cycles of those two-year grants we've had with middle school SROs. I think you see what's happening around the state and around the country. And obviously, safety is a primary importance. I know one of the goals of our Board of Education would be to have a school resource officer in every single school. We talked about that at the Safety Committee meeting that you attended back in August, Mr. Goins, and I think when we looked at the total, what it would cost in addition to what we're currently spending, we were looking at about $700,000 to add an SRO to every school. I'm not here asking for that tonight, but what we are asking for is just a match to this state grant that will continue to fund our four middle school SROs and two additional elementary SROs, which is a win-win for Suri County Schools and Suri County as a whole. One bit of good news, in the original grant, the allocation was 33,000 per SRO. Because we are a low-wealth county, they've increased that to 44,000 per SRO. If you kind of take that and look at it, 44,000 times four, you've been contributing, the total cost has been 255,000. Out of that, our part of that's been 133,000. Now, since we're getting 44,000 per position, that money's been taken up. So what it really gives us, if you stay at the same level of commitment, it's another 44,000 in savings that we can potentially put to a third elementary SRO with some additional funds. So what I'm asking for tonight, and the sheriff and I have looked at this, it's about $145,000 would be the match for this year and for next year for these positions.
That's what we're currently paying that amount. Is that correct?
Well, I probably would have to have Sandy or...
How much additional? That might be the question. How much additional?
Two additional SROs. It would be an additional over the two years, 145,000. So it would be 145,000 addition and that's over two years.
Well, those numbers include the equipment because year one is more expensive than year two.
144,000 is for two years.
Yeah.
So you're saying if we max the grant and our part is 145,000 for over two years, you're saying we're going to get three extra officers?
I'm working on the third one, yeah.
Okay.
Because this grant, they're giving more per SRO officer. They've increased it from 33 to 44. If you multiply that by four, that gives us an additional 44,000. It could be a net savings to the Commissioners of 44,000, but if you stay at the level where you're at, that would give us 44 toward another position.
Dr. Reeves, you referenced, Eddie and I was on the board on those middle school officers back in when we got the state grants issued one time and as I remember, and I know you do, I don't remember exactly the amount, but just so everybody knows, I mean, those those grants were more lucrative in the beginning as far as the county match, as I remember. And I think it affected those four middle schools, but I do remember the ratio changed and instead of about, not exactly, but instead of about 75, 25 state versus 25% match, in short order of a year or two, that match almost reversed. We paid a much higher majority portion of that fund and the state paid a much lesser. So I'll just remind the board, if you got to take action on this tonight and if that's the pleasure of the board, these state grants are not written in stone and they are not guaranteed. Now, I'm not going to sit here and argue we don't need to address school safety. I think we certainly do need to address school safety and that in many other kinds of ways. I'm just simply saying it's something you can add, but you probably won't ever take it away. But you always fund it. It just might not be at the levels that the state shared with you on the first part of these grants. Sometimes these grants change on the ratios the state is willing to pay and sometimes they go away. I mean, historically, state grants do go away sometimes. I'm just laying all that out for thought before we... I'm just laying all that out for thought before we...